Okay, Mr. Chairman. Again, we have a lot of people in the room, so we're all going to try to speak quietly so everybody can hear. So we have a couple of procedural items to address, Mr. Chairman. So the first is, as is always the case when we have multiple parties involved and entities, we like to do an internal conflict check to see if we're all, you know, who's involved and if we can determine if there's any conflicts. So, let's just have a roll call of, we've got a lot of attorneys in the room tonight, so we're having a lot of fun. So Bill Shipers is the applicant's attorney. So Bill, good evening to you, and if you could just, for the record, identify your client, the applicant is Down to Earth Construction LLC?
That's correct.
Okay, and do you identify who the members are of Down to Earth Construction LLC?
That is William Merkler and Walter Boskin.
All right, William Merkler and, and who else?
Walter Boskin, B-O-S-P-I-K-N.
Okay, and then the owner of the property, at least from the documentation, did you suggest that the owner is White House Lodging Family LP?
That is my understanding, and that Mr. Merkler's corporation is the contract purchaser.
Okay, do you know offhand who the principals are at White House Lodging?
Mr. Merkler is once sworn to identify those for you.
All right, so Mr. Merkler, we'll square you in a minute, but if you could just state that for the record right now?
Tom Wagner.
All right, is that the only principal?
I don't know how to address you.
Okay, and then we have Rick Brodsky here, and Rick, your associate is Michael?
Yes, Cas Tiori.
Cas Tiori, okay, and good evening and welcome to you, and you are representing an objector or objectors, and the name of that, of your clients?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I represent the two property owners that are immediately adjacent to the subject property that hold the sublimity application right now.
Who are they?
Your names are Joseph and Rita Puleo.
Joseph and Rita, spell that?
P-U-L-E-O.
P-U-L-E-O.
And Joel Russell.
J-O-E-L.
R-U-S-S-E-L-L.
R-U-S-S-E-L-L, all right, thank you. And then Tim Middleton, Tim Middleton is here, good evening, Mr. Middleton.
Good evening, and Mr. Kennedy, members of the board, Timothy B. Middleton. And I'm here on behalf of Dave Kinsel and Richard Tarzin.
Dave Kinsel and?
Tarzin.
Well, this person, Richard, and I spell that?
T-A-R-Z, I think I am.
I am.
Yes.
Okay, we're here as a proponent of the application, as opposed to a challenger. Okay, so thank you for that. So then, so Mr. Chairman, and they've been over the board, and again, for members of the public, we do this because the law prevents any of us from knowingly engaging in or voting on applications in which we have an interest. So sometimes when you hear the name ABC Corporation, you don't necessarily know who those are. So we do these things so we'll know if we have any, so, Mr. Chairman, hearing all those names of the parties of record, and I guess I should say, is there any other attorney formally representing anyone else in the room tonight? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, having heard those names, any conflicts or questions about conflicts or any discussion about conflicts necessarily?
I have this minor deal with Mr. Middleton, actually.
Okay.
It wasn't my primary concern, and I don't believe it has any effect on my decision.
Okay, and when was that, ever recently?
Recently.
Okay, is there any existing financial relationship right now? Okay, any issues with Mr. Shipers or Mr. Brodsky or Mr. Tiori or Mr. Middleton, any issues or concerns with that? I have none, does anybody have a word?
No.
Yeah, all right, so now we'll go to, the next topic is the notice. As you know, we always start off by saying, anyone here have any questions or comments regarding the notice? So I know Mr. Brodsky had a question or a concern that he wanted to put on the record, so, Mr. Brodsky, I'll turn the mic over to you, if you can raise your concern regarding the notice, and then we're going to let Mr. Shipers respond, and see if anyone else has any comments, and then I'll give my recommendations.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Kennedy, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rick Brodsky, on behalf of two day, immediately adjacent neighbors. We had a discussion with regards to the notice, and in reviewing statements, and I spoke to Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Shipers, Mr. Middleton, Middleton, the notice references all of the 13 or 15 variances that are associated with the application adequately and completely. The issue, though, has to do with, in describing what's proposed for construction, it talks about six fee simple luxury townhouses that are proposed for this site. I asked the question, if there, if fee simple is what is proposed, then there would be a requirement for a subdivision to form six fee simple lots. I was told this evening that in actuality, what is, and that is listed in the notice, fee simple, and it's listed in the application. Got here this evening, asked about it, and looking for subdivision application, didn't see any, and said, well, what is it that's being requested? Mr. Shipers advised that, no, it's not fee simple, but rather it's condominium units, six condominium units in two buildings. Notwithstanding that it's condominium, different form of ownership, different structure, the notice says fee simple, the application says fee simple, has been proposed, I believe that notice could be misleading to the public.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Shipers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board, William Shipers on the desk of the applicant, Mr. Brodsky, with due respect, my esteemed colleague's argument, I thank him candidly for making the candid disclosure to the board that we adequately described all variances requested, and we very adequately described the six townhouse units, we described the structure to be raised, we put all owners within the 200 foot list ongoers as to the particulars of what was being proposed this evening, as to sizing, set fats, heights, everything that we're looking to do from a variance perspective as well as from the townhouse perspective. But the particular words fee simple, I think is legal vernacular that Mr. Brodsky and I could debate and joust whether that was the exact or best phrasing maybe I'll look at in hindsight, certainly not bad notice. Case law on notice is that, does the public reasonably have knowledge as to what is being proposed, what is going to be considered by the board for them to come, was their support, their disdain, their objection? Clearly, the notice sets forth all the criteria being requested, all the variances being requested, the townhouse proposed construction being requested, notice of that.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers, and Mr. Kennedy? Sure, and I guess, just for the record, Tim Middleton, did you want to add anything?
Just very briefly, but I mean, the hallmark of the criteria for a good notice is, does it or doesn't it reasonably identify to the public what's going on tonight? And I believe, clearly as articulated by Mr. Shipers, this notice identifies the six units proposed, it identifies the block and lot, it identifies, you know, the variances. So I think a reasonable person who read about the notice in the newspaper, who got it to mail and looked at it, would know what's going on tonight, and I think we can look at a number of people who have come tonight and have realized that the notice did in fact adequately address the application tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? What's the difference between fee and simple and condominium?
And that appears to be a question, and can I connect that in one second?
I'm not understanding.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just for one second, for the, to the record, does anyone else, besides this concern, does anyone else here tonight have any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, so we see none, so now the issue is this, so, I'm going to get to your question then on it, but, but it's important because we've got a lot of attorneys in the room, and that always means that the possibility of litigation exists. So, notice as we know is always important, notice is, the legal term is, notice is jurisdictional, because if we don't have sufficient notice, we as a board do not even have jurisdiction to act. And that's why the first thing we always do is I sit here and go through and say, is my recommendation that notice is or is not sufficient? So by law, what do we have? We have an issue of, by law, the notice is required to have about four things in it, the day, the date, the time, and the place of the hearing, and it has to say the block and lot, and the street address if there is one, it's got to say the nature of the matters to be considered, and it's got to say when and where things are on file and available for inspection. So that's all pretty, pretty basic and understandable stuff, because what is the purpose? Obviously, the purpose is so that when someone reads it in the borough's official newspaper or they receive the certified letter from Mr. Shipers, they can tell what's going on and they can think to themselves, do I care about this? Do I not care about this? Do I love this application and want to come support it? Do I hate this application or I'm going to object to it? Or do I have questions and I've got to go down and check out this, at this, check out the plans and see? So, again, notice is very important because it's jurisdictional, and if it's a problem, it's going to be a huge problem, because if we don't have jurisdiction to act, we cannot lawfully approve anything. So, I appreciate the concern of Mr. Brodsky, and let's look at this notice, or Mr. Shipers' notice was a little long, so I'm going to just read it real briefly, not the whole thing, says the, to the property owners, "The undersigned has filed an appeal, or application for development with the zoning board addressed to the borough of Belmar, for variances from the requirements of the land use ordinance so as to permit the applicant Down to Earth Construction LLC, contract purchaser of 102 Second Avenue, Belmar, in Jersey, to raise the building structure which currently exists on a non-conforming use, 34 bedroom rooming house with no onsite parking, and build six fee simple luxury townhomes." It then goes on, "In conjunction with the application, the applicant is applying for the following variances in design ways." It talks about use variance, permitted single-family use, existing 34 bedroom, pre-existing non-conforming use, rooming house proposed, six townhouses, fee simple with common elements. It talks about front yard setback, and says required existing and proposed, front yard setback to the porch required existing and proposed, rear yard setback required existing and proposed, height required existing and proposed, building coverage maximum required existing and proposed, lot coverage required existing and proposed, maximum floor area ratio required existing and proposed, lot shape minimum required existing and proposed, and parking required spaces existing and proposed. And then he also has, and by the way, any other variances at the border, code enforcement officer may deem necessary, that's in case there's a shift around the plan of the application. Talks about the address and the block and lot, and when things are on file. So, the question becomes, Mr. Brodsky, and I appreciate his concerns, is suggesting that the words in here, fee simple luxury townhomes are essentially inconsistent with, the implication is fee simple is this straight-up ownership, like you own a single-family home and you own the dirt and you own the ground and that thing versus it's condo or a townhouse where there might be an association of some sort. So, I don't necessarily know, and this all just came up with only the last hour and a half, so I don't necessarily know if this is the best or most accurate use of the word fee simple, but I don't necessarily know that it's the worst or misleading use. So, this would be my thoughts. Well, first of all, I'm going to defer initially to Mr. Shipers here, because obviously, the applicant, if the applicant receives approval, the applicant has the most to lose. So, Mr. Shipers, I'm assuming based upon what you've said here, you're comfortable with the notice and you wish to proceed tonight?
Comfortable and want to proceed.
Okay, so, so my recommendation would be, I do believe the notice is sufficient. I think it's clear enough to be, to put everyone on a notice. Fortunately, there's lots of people in the room tonight, fortunately, Mr. Brodsky is here on behalf of his clients, and I respectfully submit that there's nothing here to compromise their ability to review and oppose the application and to ask all the right questions that they need to ask, and the same thing with the public. Maybe the use of the word fee simple is not necessarily right, I'm not saying that, that would be a question, but I don't think that phrase is sufficient to necessarily halt the presentation tonight, but again, that would be, the applicant wants to proceed, because the applicant would always have the right to say, I don't think Rick Brodsky's right, but I'm just out of the bonus of caution, I've got a great notice, so I don't have to do this. But, I do feel that it's important that we just make out a couple of quick caveats. Number one, Rick pointed out that they didn't apply for a subdivision, that's clear, they did not apply for a subdivision, they did not notice for a subdivision, so however this unfolds tonight, you cannot grant subdivision approval, but that, that's sort of obvious, so that's not going to be. I think, and again, to Judy, to your question, the difference between fee simple and townhomes, there's an implication that fee simple just means you own everything, the dirt, the land, the roof, whereas an association would apply differently. I would tend to think, and I defer to all you, if you feel differently, I would tend to think that that phrase in and of itself does not necessarily prevent the members of the public from coming here tonight, to come here or not come here. I would respectfully submit that the phrase in there, the fee simple, wasn't something that made people come here or not come here, I could be wrong on that. So I would, if you all are comfortable, I would assume that we should note Mr. Brodsky's objections for the record and then proceed, but certainly, if you all, the board members, feel that the notice is issued problematic on your part, we will change the ruling. Does anybody have an objection?
Okay, can, moving forward, can the attorney whose voice is concerned take it to another level? Can he litigate it or appeal it or?
Yes.
And can we be held responsible for allowing?
Yes.
The decisions to be made?
Yes.
When it wasn't clarified?
Yes, if, if, if a court were to find that notice is not sufficient, any approval that, again, I'm acting like you're going to approve it, I don't know what you think about the application. But any, if, if notice is found to be invalid or defective, that would compromise and that would, that would basically negate any, any approval that you granted, which is why for our meeting, we had a little bit of delay because the attorneys went out into the bathroom and gym area to sort of discuss it. And again, it was nice that everyone was sort of friendly and brought this up, you know, outside and no one was, was so-called blindsided.
Right.
But yeah, which is why, you know, one of the things that we say to Mr. Shipers is, we say, well, listen, you know, your client is, is on the hook here, you know, this is your client, your client's time and money, so that's why we always want to make sure that, that he's comfortable. So, so yes, so, so yes, could this be an issue later on? Yes, now, the good thing is, obviously, Mr. Brodsky is here, of course, his clients are here, so there's nothing that presumably would have prevented them, I mean, the worst thing is, if, if notice was, someone didn't get notice it was supposed to.
True.
And then all of a sudden you find out about two weeks later, you know, that then it really pickled that turn. So, again, I definitely don't feel comfortable when, whenever there's a notice issue, but we have two options, we either say proceed or not proceed, the applicant wants to proceed, we do have to, you know, we have timeframes within which we need to adjudicate or an agree upon extension, and I do believe that in light of everything, though there may be some confusion on the meaning of fee simple and is that inconsistent, I, I do believe that the notice is sufficient to put the world on notice as to what is going on here. But I certainly defer to all you, if you feel very uncomfortable, I'm sure, you know, announce that and, and maybe that would change Mr. Shiper's mind, but I feel comfortable that it's, it's sufficient, but I defer to all you if you have any other questions. Mr. Chairman?
I'd just like to, you know, in concur, ask, ask a question for the board. First of all, the board has been informed in advance of hearing any testimony or proceeding about this technical change of the statute, okay, so, so I think in that regard, the board should be considered covered in that, in that way, and as long as we're proceeding with the assurance that that technical change doesn't affect what we're reviewing tonight in any way, shape, or form, fee simple or condominium nation, because it's not germane to the variances that are being put in front of us, that that does not have an effect on our decision, I think we can go forward because as a board, we're, we're covered in that way, and that should go on record prior to us voting, because we're proceeding with that good intent, that I don't believe that it had any impact or influence, and now if, if the objector about the notice feels differently, that we as a board would be influenced by that designated change, I think then our vote will be different. So I think it's basically speak now and be at peace with it, or speak now and object, or speak now, or don't speak now and be at peace with it, or pick one, because if there's an objection, it's a good time to object before we proceed.
And let Mr. Brodsky respond to that momentarily, any other comments or questions? None, other words, Mr. Kennedy? All right, and Mr. Brodsky, I mean, clearly, Mr. Brodsky is objected to this, he's raising it, and, Mr. Brodsky, did you want to add anything?
Oh, okay. Yeah, now I stand up, thanks, yes, I have formally raised the objection to the board, I do believe that the, there could be members of the public who are not here for whatever reason, based on the notice, I think whether or not, the fact that we are here, I'm happy to be here, my clients got noticed, they live right next door, they're adjacent, but the issue goes to, regardless of who's here and who's not, the issue goes to whether the notice reasonably and accurately reflects what the nature of the application is. So I'm basing my objection here tonight on the fact that we have an application that's, that has submitted seeking approval for fee simple luxury townhomes. We have a public notice that's put in the newspaper that's sent to all property owners within 200 feet that says, we are seeking approvals for fee simple luxury townhomes, and that's not what's going to be discussed.
How does that change our review and decision process relative to the variance?
Really not, well, well, that's really the question, is that, is that if it has an effect on what we're reviewing on the basis, but if, if, if we can't escape that it would have an effect, I don't see why it's a problem. No, I mean, well, I think the notice is not for, is not for the board members, the board members have all the documents and all the plans and applications, so, and if amendments and the revision is made here tonight and by the applicant saying, no, it's not fee simple, it's condominium, or it's whatever else it is, then the board can accurately make a decision and review the evidence. The concern, though, is that the notice is designed to put the public on notice, not the board members, and we'll never know whether or not there's someone who didn't come because they didn't, because they relied on the notice that they received, not will present it here tonight.
Would you want to continue, or would you want to adjourn this and reschedule, based on your assessment?
It's really the applicant's decision, I'm just, look, I gave forward, I put the applicant on notice that, you know, my clients have very strong feelings about this application and are very directly affected, and so, I, who knows what's going to happen in this application, but if it were to be approved and there was an appeal filed to the Superior Court, that would be an issue, that would be part of our, you know, don't know whether I win or lose, it would be raised.
I have the notice in front of me, but I think that you said that he says fee simple townhouses?
Fee simple, six fee simple luxury townhomes.
So if it were properly noticed, it would have said, it wouldn't say fee simple, it would just say townhomes.
It would say condominiums, or it would say condominiums, or whatever it is that it's going to be, I mean, remember, townhomes, townhomes is a description of the type of structure it is, the legal ownership is condominium or fee simple or whatever.
It literally says on the notice, townhomes.
Six fee simple luxury townhomes.
Thank you.
I have a question, is this your only objection to the application?
To the application?
To the application.
No, no, we're going to speak at length. Numerous variances, and I can start now, it's lunch.
No, thank you.
I just raised this as a preliminary issue, because as Mr. Kennedy explained, is, you know, the way the law is, if there, it, look, if I'm right, if I happen to be right, sometimes I'm right, sometimes I'm wrong, if I happen to be right, we could go through months of hearings, it goes up, and the judge says the notice was insufficient, throw it out, start over. So that's my ruling.
So let me understand.
I could have just sat quiet and not raised, but that's not, that's not what we can do.
And then presented it before the court.
Correct.
Quietly.
So if that were to happen, we're asking the person who is applying for this, we are saying to them, are you willing to take that risk?
Yes.
And they are saying, yes, we are willing to take that risk.
Mr. Shipers still proceeding on the grounds?
Yes, that's, that's correct, I, with, with due respect to, to Mike Ali, I'm not going to add to that, Sarah, I'm going to follow. Our position is this is just one of many firewalls that we're going to hose through. There's going to be objections all along the way.
Sure.
This is objection number one, so, we want to keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers, does anybody have any objections to moving forward at this point on the board?
The only question I have, Chairman, would, would we be wasting our time?
I think, I think the applicant has made the decision, in my mind, that they want to move forward with it, so we're here to hear that application, in my mind.
So they're willing to take the risk, as they have. So, so I think that, I think that Mr. Fitzgerald was saying is, it's not us taking the risk that the board, it's the applicant taking the risk.
And here, yes, yes, but, but here's the other thing also, is, because always, most of the times, the applicant, a lot of times, they take, they take the risk, doesn't mean that they should, but that, that's not unusual, but I think, in fairness, you also have to say that some of the, has to stop at, at my little desk here, because I have to recommend to you all that the notice is sufficient or not sufficient, and there have been many times when we have had to say, people, I'm sorry, but I just don't find the notice being sufficient, I know you're willing to take the risk, but I can't take the risk, but clear, under these circumstances, I appreciate Mr. Brodsky's comments, and, and I'm not saying he's right, I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm not saying Mr. Shipers is right or wrong, I mean, it's, it's, interesting, it sounds like a little of a law school exam question, but I, I do believe that, that the notice is sufficient for to put us and the world on notice as to what they're applying for, and I think it puts the public on notice, if Mr. Shipers were going to say, look, I don't, I think Rick is wrong, but I just, out of the bonus of caution, I just want to do it over and not have to deal with it, I would totally respect and be comfortable with that position, but we don't have that situation here. So I do believe that the notice is sufficient to proceed, but I, you know, like I said, I defer if any of you feel strongly. But I, you know, like I said, I defer if anyone feels strongly about it, you know.
Nobody feels strongly enough?
Well, this gets back to, are we happy with what we're paying Mr. Kennedy?
Or it's.
It comes back again.
Are we happy with how much we're all getting paid?
Well, we're getting paid. Are we, are we helping our rate stick see? I don't know if you have to answer.
That's a December conversation, but, but, and again, and I, and I do all joke aside, this notice has to, and again, no notice is probably ever going to be perfect, ever, on any application, any town, anywhere. But what we have to do is let's look at the, 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 the actual notice and let's talk about four things. Does it put the, you know, say the day, date, the time, and the place of the hearing? Does it say the street address and the block and lot? Does it say the nature of the matters to be considered? And does it say when, where, things are on file? And, and I think if you get there, and again, it might be, it's an article, the word be simple. Uh, I don't know if, if that would trigger an insufficient notice. And again, importantly, if it turns out that Mr. Schipers needs subdivision approval, that's not on the table tonight. So, so, but anyway, so I guess that.
Subdivision approval is only necessary if, in fact, it works, if he says.
Yes, I mean, what, what, what Mr. Brodsky.
But since it's not, then therefore subdivision approval is not needed. So proceeding with the amended terminology, which is, seems like what we're going to actually agree to tonight, would fix that.
Yeah, I think, I think somewhere in, in the Mazer review memo, it basically said, Gaffin has to give testimony as to whether or not there's going to be some type of association. So I think that's, uh, you know, so, Mr. Chairman, will, will proceed, I'm assuming?
Yes, I estimate it is not to proceed, so.
Yes, okay. So then, what we'll do, but again, we, we place Mr. Brodsky's objections on the record. So now what we'll do is Derek Jordan, for a third time tonight, you are the borough engineer. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providers will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guys?
I do.
Okay. So now, Mr. Chairman, just to mark up the record, what we as a board have before us. A1 can be the development application, and that's dated September 25th, 2018. And A2 will be the Borough of Belmar Minor Land use certificate, and that's dated September 17th, 2018, slash September 18th, 2018. A3 is going to be a zoning criteria chart, uh, prepared by, identified, undated. Actually, it's dated September 13th, 2018. And it looks like it's, uh, from Mr. DeFalko's office, we could have Mr., oh, okay. So that is, that is A3. And then A4 is a, can I say, according, uh, legal memorandum from Mr. Schipers. It's a letter to, uh, the zoning board, and zoning board members is dated October 9th, October 9th, 2018. And it's a legal opinion on Uweedman. So we're going to mark that in. I did speak with Mr. Brodsky's office, he does, he does have that. And, uh, so we'll hear about that later on. And then, okay, A5 will be the plans, uh, the site plan, prepared by JKR Engineering, dated August 13th, 2018, consisting of seven chiefs. And then A6 will be the architectural plans and elevations, prepared by MB Hern Architecture, dated September 21st, 2018. And, Mr. Chairman, that was five sheets. And last but not least, we have A7. That will be, uh, Mazer Consulting Review Memorandum, dated October 18th, 2018. So I think I have that all. And so against that backdrop, I will, and I appreciate the time, uh, that you all poured into this discussion. And we will turn it over to Mr. Schipers to begin.
First, Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to swear Mr. Merkler and Ms. Hern, and then with Ms. Hern's assistance, I'm going to ask with your assistance, that we continue to mark exhibits.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Merkler, just state your name again for the record.
William Merkler.
Maybe R.K. Elmore. All right, Mr. Merkler, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide is the truth, the best you know, to help you guys?
I do.
Okay. And actually, just for the record, we'll tie up what we sent here. You earlier testified that, um, you were good enough to testify before you're under oath, that the principal of White House lodging families LP was Tom Wager. Uh, now that you're under oath, same thing, right?
Yes, that's my ability, I believe Tom is the.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, Mary Hern, good evening and welcome again. Do you, you've been raised to my hand, and just state your name for the record.
Mary Hern.
And you're testifying tonight as an architect.
Please, as an architect.
Okay. Uh, do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guys?
Yes.
Okay. And now, uh, there are some exhibits that you wanted.
There are.
All right, so we'll start with A8.
A8 is colored rendition, uh, color, okay, so they're separate color elevations than what we're submitted. So we'll, A8 is the south and north colored elevations.
Okay, so, uh, A8 is going to be an illustrated elevation, the south and north elevations, prepared by.
My office.
Okay, and is there a date on that?
10/22/18.
10/22/18. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the ladies and the benefit of the public, these documents that are marked into the record are going to be kept by the board and will be available for inspection of the board secretary if anyone wants to repeat it. If we don't finish tonight, I'm not saying we're not going to finish, but if we don't. So that was A8. So now, A9.
A9 is the same, except they are the east and west elevations.
Illustrated elevation, east and west, prepared by.
My office.
MB Hern, same date?
Same date, 10/22.
Got it.
We have a tax, colored tax map.
A10 will be an illustrated tax map and, uh, a bunch of, a bunch of colors. And that's, uh, who put those nice colors on it?
I did.
Okay. And is there a date on that?
There is a last revision date. So this is Belmar's tax map with a last revision date of July 2nd, 2015, but colored today.
July 2nd, 2015, illustrated, 10/23, 2018. So that's A10.
We have a photo board of one photo aerial of the subject property and surrounds.
So A, I'm sorry, uh, hold on, that, A10 was illustrated October 13th, got it. And A11 is a photo board, say it again.
Aerial of the sub, one photo aerial of the subject property and surrounds.
Got it.
A12 is another aerial photo of the subject property and the two, four properties to the west.
You could just mark that A12 somehow.
Yep. One photo aerial. A13 is another aerial single photo of the subject property and the two properties to the west. A14 is one, um, photo. The property to the north.
Northeast and.
Showing the property, showing the property to the north and east of the subject property. So that's A14.
Yeah, so let me just, uh, so that picture was taken by?
Uh, council myself.
A15, one photo. Looking northwest off the north portion of the property.
Taken by?
By council.
One photo board that has 12 photos.
All right, so this one's going to be A16, one board containing.
12 photos.
Uh.
Of the structure on site, taken by my office this week.
So you can say that that's an accurate depiction?
Yes. And, and we do have mounted, um, drawings out of both Mr. DeFalko's packet and mine that are not changed in any way. So we won't mark that, but just mounted for ease. Is that okay?
That's the chair. Okay. And, uh, are you any more?
That's it.
All right, and you know what? Uh, just, Mr. Chairman, even though Mary Hern, uh, comes here quite frequently, to the, uh, just for the record, given the number of attorneys in the room, and you might not be familiar with her, uh, Mr. Schipers, if you wouldn't mind qualifying, uh, Ms. Hern, and, uh, to see if any of the attorneys or director have any comments or questions about the qualifications.
Okay, Ms. Hern, I want to do a bit more of a lengthy rendezvous.
All right.
Starting with, um, college education.
Virginia Tech, Bachelor of Architecture.
What year?
Eighty-six.
Uh, after, after that, where did you come licensed, what state?
Licensed in Florida in ninety, New Jersey ninety-two, New York ninety-four, Pennsylvania ninety-six.
Uh, at what point of time, or what type of work did you do, let's say, in Florida, and then working your way to New Jersey?
Um, commercial work in a licensed architecture firm, and all the way through to today, um, residential work in my own firm.
Uh, when did you set up shop in New Jersey?
Two thousand.
And where was your location of your first shop in New Jersey?
One, Highway 138 Wall for ten years, and now nine years at 1007 Main Street, Belmar.
So for about nineteen years, you've been with, didn't finish my question. You've been about 10 miles from this location?
Yes.
And approximately, how many times have you appeared before either the zoning board of the Borough of Belmar or the planning board of the Borough of Belmar?
Um, in excess of 200 homes.
Do you sit on any boards yourself?
I sit on Wal Street, zoning board adjustment.
And how long have you sat on that board?
Two years.
Are you, um, are you members of any professional societies?
Uh, the AIA, yes, and, and CARP. And prior to being a board member on Wal's Board Adjustment, I was on the planning board for 11 years.
I prefer Ms. Hern as an expert in the field of residential.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, uh, Mr. Brodsky, do you have any questions on the qualifications?
Uh, no objections, no qualifications.
Tim, any, uh, comments?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Have you accepted those qualifications, thank you.
Hey, Mary, if you could maybe, uh, after the, well, you can describe, because I know the public also probably wants to see before 11 o'clock what is ultimately being proposed. So you'll be my next witness. So maybe just put up what your drawings are.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be getting the, the, you all to make the next.
Yep.
Mr. Schipers, if you, if you wouldn't mind just giving us an outline of what you propose to present tonight before 11 o'clock, just so we have a.
Sure. Sure. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, good members of, of the public, tonight I have the pleasure of representing, uh, Bill Merkler, Will Bobstein, uh, and their corporate capacity. They proposed to redevelop what we commonly refer to as the White House property at the base of literally first and second, a 34-room rooming house, to raise that property and to develop six luxury townhomes on that property, uh, in two buildings. The Westerly building being a four-unit building, the Esterly building being a two-unit building. Tonight, within the next 52 minutes, uh, I'm going to try to get through perhaps two people. Bill Merkler is the principal, who's also a resident of Second Avenue. So you can understand, um, really the concept of how this came to be, uh, why he's here, why Walt is here with him in lockstep and at his shoulder, uh, how and why he retained Mary, what his intentions, his thoughts, what Bill's priorities are, and why he's proposing this type of development, why he chose Mary, what his charge to Mary was, what he was trying to do for the neighbor living of full-time resident a block or so down the street, what he's hoping to bring for the North End and prevent perhaps what could happen in the North End. And I think you need to hear from Bill, I think the record needs to hear from Bill. The good public, I think, has come here, has waited probably three hours to see what Bill is proposing and what Mary has drawn. So before I get into all the existings and the engineering and all the legal mumbo jumbo of setting forth the record, all the attorney stuff, I think, is going to come next time. I want Mary to do her best to lay out what she has drawn and what she's proposing so everybody can get a flavor and understand, including the public, of, of what Bill is proposing. And I hope at that juncture, that there's as many or more supporters in the room than objectors, and they all shake Bill's hand at the end of the night and things are good. Uh, so with that, I'm going to, uh, ask Bill to speak. I don't think after Mary, even if we end a few minutes early, I don't think it would be prudent to go into my next witness. I think we all go and watch the scores of the games tonight, whatever they might be.
All right, excuse me. Um, Mr. Kennedy, you might want to clarify to the audience, for those that might be here for the first time, what's going to transpire, because we've mentioned the word 11 o'clock. So they need to know that if this presentation isn't complete, or we vote before 11, that it's going to be.
Yes, good, good point, Mr. Power. So, uh, for those of you who are not regular attendees to our zoning board meetings, uh, I hope you enjoy yourself and please come back. Uh, we're going to have an approximate cuddle up hour of 11 o'clock, uh, for all the obvious reasons. So everyone can get back and go on with life. And, uh, and what happens is if we do not finish tonight, which seems unlikely, uh, we will carry this to another meeting. And, uh, April here, our board secretary, will announce that, that hearing date. So, uh, there's going to be some comments, some testimony from Mr. Merkler, and then, and then Mary. There'll be opportunity for board questions, uh, there'll be opportunity for public questions, maybe not tonight. Uh, again, just questions as to the testimony they presented, and the, uh, attorneys will be able to supplement the questions as well. And then, uh, we'll go through the process for the other witnesses as well.
So if that's the case, could I suggest that we re-notice appropriately the exact right of reporting so that the public would have an opportunity to come if there's anyone else out there who would like to?
That's predicated upon the fact that we don't make a decision before 11 o'clock, Mr. Kennedy.
So, Mr. Uh, uh, Schipers, there's a request that you re-notice just out of the bonus of caution. And you'll think about that, and we're going to get back to that before 11 o'clock. So, so, okay. So, Mr. Merkler, you want to continue?
Mr. Kennedy, can I just approach for a moment, just before we start?
Sure.
Um, a re-notice, just so it's understood, re-notice is a perfectly reasonable request. But if we have testimony tonight and then there's a re-notice, wouldn't we have to redo the testimony that takes place this evening? Because, uh, otherwise the re-notice is only noticing for a portion of the evidence.
Are we folks listening to the transcript or read the transcript?
I mean, really, if, if the notice is, is, is efficient, we shouldn't proceed tonight at all. So, but, and I think Mr. Schipers will, will address that before it's 11 o'clock, which an hour.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Who are you?
My name's William Merkler. Uh, I live at 219 Second Avenue in Belmar. Um, I've lived in Belmar basically my entire life. Um, I grew up here in the. I grew up here in the summer, got to enjoy the beaches as a kid, which is a dream for anyone. And then I met my lovely bride Shannon, and we moved to Delmar approximately twenty-five years ago. I have four children that all grew up in Delmar, and are still growing up in Delmar. And two of my children are in college now, and my youngest is in grammar school. And I've been on the town council, also the term of the town council here. I've done numerous volunteer work in town, and I believe my family has been entrenched in Delmar, volunteering, doing numerous things, and just being part of the great community that we have here. One thing I do do every day is I drive up from my house on Second Avenue, and I go by the ocean. My office is in Jackson, but every day I love to go up to the ocean and just look at it. And before I get there, I look at the White House, which is at the end of that block. And in the last, you know, five years ago, I saw this four-story sign go up, I talked to Tom, the owner, in Wisham Lock, and a lot of people did. And I thought maybe something would go on, even in my head. I predicted that maybe three, you know, three homes with the price he's asking for, maybe three homes could be jammed into that, and builders would do that. I built homes in town, I have been with my partner for about fifteen years now. We've redeveloped many streets. Ninth Avenue, you know, we came in and we were actually before this board, and, you know, we had some objectives at that early on in time. We turned Ninth Avenue, I believe, into a beautiful street speed. There's new custom homes there, you know, the neighbors often see me at Seven-Eleven where I go every morning, and, you know, congratulating, you know, and still thanking for that project. We bought the Barclay and knocked that down, my partner and I, Walt, and constructed four single-family homes there. And we, you know, some of the neighbors were upset when we knocked the Barclay down, believe they're not, they wanted to keep it, you know, and maybe not in that condition, and they said, you know, I got married there, you know, my children got married there. And I said, just wait and see, when you see this transformation, you'll realize what our goal is. And, you know, to this day, people are still thanking me for that project, and I think we beautified Delmar and numerous other, you know, projects that we've done. So getting back to the White House, I've driven by, and I started to get concerned about two years ago. I see that it's not being maintained the way it has been in the past. I heard of one offer from a Silver Recovery group that wanted to purchase it, and I, you know, became concerned. I felt that I would not put three homes packed in there, and it wouldn't be fair to the people I sold to or the neighbors. And I, you know, even searched out a few times on what I could use to this property. And just recently, about a year ago, I came over the bridge, saw the big Delmar sign, and saw that the backdrop was the White House. And it's not what should greet us in Delmar. It not should be representing what is, you know, what you want to do in Delmar. So I went over to talk to Mary, and she said, "Bill, twenty people have come in to me about this project, please don't put three houses there." I said, "Mary, I'm not even thinking about that, what can we do?" So I talked to Tom, and I, we worked out a price, and, you know, we took some negotiation, because, you know, there's a certain price that Tom needed to get. We came to a term that, you know, would be the contract buyer, we got the approvals. So I wanted to present something that, A, was absolutely gorgeous for Delmar, and B, something that I could actually live in. I wanted to, you know, downsize in the next few years and have something where I could still live in Delmar, but something that will, you know, will be representative of something I want to live in. And I came to Mary with a, literally a box that covers everything on the property. She said, "Throw it out, don't even bring this." So I said, "Okay, you take a look at it." And thirty years later, I called her and said, "What have you got, what have you got?" And she came up with a beautiful design of what this could be, you know, it hit every mark that I wanted to, and went beyond. And then we went back and then tweaked it more. I said, "Mary, just need a little bit nicer than this," and she knocked it out of the park. I can't thank you enough, Mary. And, you know, we truly are lucky to have Mary come before the board two hundred times here, because the town has really improved in the times we've been here. You know, from east to west, it looks like single-family homes from straight on, and it looks like a chaotic state. It's absolutely gorgeous. And, you know, I am worried, because my children and my wife walk up and down Second Avenue almost every day, and my wife walks on the boardwalk almost every day. And the White House is becoming something that we're not proud of anymore. And, you know, people have come up to me and said, "You know what? The White House was a great place, but its time has come. It's meant to have some action, and it's time to move on." And I've worked with the neighbors and, you know, spoke to them about different changes. I came back, and I scrunched this down on American Test- Testament, that, you know, I've worked this to, you know, satisfy as many people as I possibly can with this plan, and I think, you know, as we go through this, you'll see that we've done this. We have an opportunity. When I knocked down homes on Ninth Avenue, when I knocked down the Barclay, people were upset. But what I did is I transformed, not only the homes I did, you started seeing dumpsters in front of people's homes and renovations, and it really carried on throughout the streets. You know, you can see that on Ninth Avenue, you can see it on Fourth and Fifth Avenue. Actually, on Fifth Avenue, not only did we transform the homes around us, we started getting calls from homes four or five, you know, houses down, saying, "Knock down my house and we'll be doing," that actually we did not get out of the park. So, and we've done that. So what I'm looking to do is have something that we can all be proud of as we pull into Delmar, and come over that bridge, see the Delmar sign, and say, "You know what? We did not get out of the park." So I'm asking you to help us not get out of the park. Thank you.
Agreed.
All right, the next witness would be Mary Hearn.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
That's okay. Kevin, is that all right? Good evening, Mr. Merkler. Rick, you can stand here, please. Appreciate your testimony, appreciate you looking to do the best for the property, but I just have a couple of questions. You referenced a couple of things, and I just want to make sure, just a handful of questions. Well, first of all, have you selected a builder yet? If this were approved, who would the builder would be on?
Yes.
Who was that?
Uh, North End Builders.
Is that who's represented by Mr. Middleton?
Uh, Dave is my partner.
Okay, just wanted, I heard the name twice, and I just wanted to make sure. You referenced that, you talked about contemplating, I think you said, jamming three homes into the project. And you're proposing six here as part of this plan, is that right?
No, it's not true. My statement was that I would, that I didn't want to jam three single-family homes into this. This is six townhouses, not feasible.
Six townhouses, six townhouses, not feasible. So you went on three homes. Now, would the zoning permit three homes?
No.
Okay. And obviously it doesn't permit six townhouses, that's why we're here. So do you know what would be permitted on the property, based on the existing zoning?
I believe it's one-
A single-family, okay. Did you consider doing that?
It'd be, it wasn't contemplated just for the affordability of it.
Now, now, I wanted to get to that. You talked about affordability, and I understand that's not a concern for the board, but you raised it and referenced that the owner needed to get a certain price. Can you explain what you mean by that?
I believe that he's, between his family members and himself, need to have a value, they hit a value of what they absolutely need to get to that property. That's what I've been told.
So is, so is the driving force behind what you're contemplating and proposing to the board for this property based on what the owner needs to get to the property?
I designed this with Mary Hearn to present the best project we can, and that's what we have.
Okay. Now, I'm wondering, you mentioned that you initially brought some plans, and Mary, by the way, the plans are beautiful. You may not agree that it's good for this property, but they're beautiful. But you said you brought a plan to Mary that she said, "Don't bother." Can you just, is that because it required too many variances?
No.
Okay. Did the number of variances associated with this application come into play in your, in what you contemplated doing with the property, or how you contemplated developing it?
The first plan or the plan of Mary did?
This one.
This one. Mary and I worked out the different strategies on what would be the best going forward.
And so what, when you did that, what were the variances that you identified that you would comply with in connection with the proposed application?
Uh, the setbacks, maybe-
Well, you need a variance for those.
Yep. Uh, making sure that our neighbors to the, on Second Avenue, our homes lined up, so we weren't blocking any views.
Do you comply with any of the zoning requirements applicable to this property, other than the lots signs?
I would have to defer that to-
Okay, obviously.
I don't think you do, but maybe to go find one.
The, and along those lines, you mentioned, I think, that you scrunch down the project. Project, I use that word all the time, by the way, I really do. You scrunch down the project, did you originally contemplate more than six units?
No.
So what was it that was there originally that you decided to-
Remove the units.
The width?
Correct.
So that they would get closer to the property lines?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to check, because your front yard setback proposed is five feet. How much closer were you, was the original plan to the front property line, closer than five feet?
Uh, the-
Long River.
The Long-
East Hocking River.
Yeah.
Long River, no, those had always been there.
Okay, and in the rear, and it's a, I understand that-
That five yard, that five-foot setback was taken into consideration because we were looking out and abutting the street, and that abuts the park. And that's why we concentrated on having just a five-foot setback there, just to, just because we knew that wouldn't affect basically any residents.
And did you contemplate holding a twenty-foot setback as required under the orders?
The plans that Mary proposed, we couldn't.
You couldn't, you physically couldn't comply with it? Because what would that mean, the units would get smaller, or there would be less units?
Uh, there would be less units.
Less units. And you didn't contemplate, you didn't consider building less than six, even though only one is permitted?
Correct.
Okay. And then with regard, and I know it's an unusual lot, it's a corner lot, so-
It's actually a triangle.
Yeah, it's a triangle, okay, that you make on a corner, there's two fronts and a rear, right? And so the rear, it's not shown on these beautiful colorful drawings, but the rear is where my client's homes are located, adjacent to the rear line.
The current building is on the property line.
Right, right, and then, and you're, and you're saying that you're being five and a half, and you know what's required in, for a rear zone? It's forty feet, but you're proposing five and a half.
Yep.
There's just one other question. I'd rather further this with.
Thank you. Could we, Don, or, Mr. Middleton, did you have anything?
Tim Mel-
No, no, I do not.
Okay. So we just, we either do the public questions of him now, or we do the public later on? We just have to make sure we have public of Mr. Merkler before we end, or before we did the application ends.
Yeah, it would be my preference to hold public questions at the end of the application, if that's acceptable. Okay.
Ms. Hearn. Hey, Mary, I'm going to pretty much ask some open-ended questions, and literally let you inform the board, and tell them about what your tour was to design, and how you went about designing, and what you came up with to accomplish the feat to render your project plans for Mr. Merkler, Mr. Bostian, and his corporation.
Sure. So Bill and I met, Bill said I would like to fit six luxury townhomes on the property. And we had surveyed the scale, and I sketch out a unit that I think satisfies just being big enough to warrant luxury, and not too small that it's not desirable, and not too big because six was a challenge right from the beginning. And I do so many projects in Delmar that I know the five-foot side yard setback is prevalent. To me, the setback to the west acts like a side yard. I did not even contemplate it as a rear yard in the beginning, because you may not believe this, but sometimes I don't consider zoning first. Usually I do. Anybody that's called me and said, "We'll do anything without a survey," and we tackle zoning right up front. But here I wanted to design a project that best suited the program, six, what I thought those homes should have in them, and how they should sit on this property. Knowing we would be up against several variances and in front of you, I thought parking's very important. Open air as best we can, and try not to block views of our neighbors. And that was actually a real concern of Bill Merkler's too, who has told me he's met time and time again with neighbors, trying to appease as best he can. So we honored front yard setback average on Second Avenue, so that we weren't blocking the people to the west that face Second Avenue. And we held the buildings south of the neighbor to the north, to the west of us to the north. There's two immediate neighbors that I was concerned with, that Bill was concerned with. And we felt we wedged the four units that I could fit there on the property, albeit with variance, along what is the bulk of the lot. So I'm just gonna hold this up quickly, and I'll, this is just a site plan, it's in the packet, but you can see that we're working with-
So maybe we didn't separately identify.
No, this is sheet six of seven, average DeFauco's plans, it's a land-saving plan, but it just shows the buildings on the site. And the challenge was getting units out near the edge, because we narrowed down to nothing, as a triangle does. And so as many units as I could get to staff the west end of this triangle, the more likely was that we could get six to fit on the property, albeit with variances. So knowing parking is very important, I came up with separating two buildings with a drive between them. We have a lot of these in town at the ocean area, where we have lanes behind buildings, so that we can afford garages behind the- so that we can afford garages behind the houses so they're not front door garages. You don't see the garages from the streets. That's been a desire in general of the town. So by creating an interior lane, which has been done time and time again on the ocean front blocks, we get back loading garages and we provide parking to each of our units. We provide two parking spaces. We require more than that, but at least we're getting two. What Bill had presented to me was an idea, it wasn't a real drawing, it was a sketch on a pad, similar to what is going on in the Seacort redevelopment where we have one massive building and we park under the whole thing. And we try to find an elevator and a stair or two and get up, and we have hallways. And I didn't see that as luxury. I didn't see that as what I would want on Ocean Avenue. I would want my own living space stacked with my own garage under it. And so, there wasn't much pushback from you once we saw that we could fit in bulk on the property of those six units. So what Bill had thought of was similar to this, but push the buildings together, there was no middle lane, park under the whole thing, shared hallways upstairs and those that item. And I didn't, I thought this better suited that area. And the thought of luxury. So these could be, you own wall to wall, nobody else is going through your space, they're not going through your garage. And wouldn't it be great to be able to park your own cars under our own building and have an elevator and a stair that got you up through the height of your own house? You could get groceries up easily because you're parking under a house. All the things that work well in luxury townhomes. But feel more like individual homes than a shared building. So that was the first changeover. And once we got the lane in place, really the shape of the lot dictated where the buildings could go, and then how, again, how tight could I keep them to try to not block neighbors' views and fit them on the property and work? Getting garages to fit under and elevators and stairs in the right places when you're on a small footprint is a challenge, a challenge we architects love, but a challenge nonetheless. So we also have this ocean, you know, this view that we want to see. And so, we try to get as much glass as we can on the west side and try not to block views of the back building with the front building and try to just keep it tight, keep it as tight off the corner as I could. We try to honor any views of neighbors to the south looking north. Try to put the entire bulk of the northmost building entirely south of the house to the west of us on River. Put the front of the both buildings that face Second Avenue in line with the houses on Second Avenue like we do on any other street. So the porch is at the same distance off the street and the bulk of the house is at the same distance off the street. So we really maneuvered this as best we could before I ever looked at, is that a rear setback? Is that a side setback? Because those things, had I just laid down the lines of setbacks, nothing fits on this property. The setbacks are twenty, twenty and forty on a triangle. So to me, the rear property, the rear setback on the west side technically acts as a side. It is the side of both of the houses to the west of us. It's not their rear. So when we think of a rear yard, in reality, it usually acts up to somebody else's rear yard. And that's why we asked for more, significantly more distance there, forty instead of five. But this acts like a side yard setback. It is aligned with the sides of those two properties, or the only two properties where we touch, we're adjacent to. So to me, offering five feet there made all the sense in the world. And then when Rich said, "That's a rear," I go, "What do you mean that's a rear? How do you know what's a rear on a triangle?" Technically, it's a rear. So for a technicality, we should have forty feet there. If we move forty feet in, we're left with a very small little triangle out at the edge. Made no sense to me to change it. It acts like a side yard setback and we think it's a variance worth considering for that reason. We talked, and the existing White House sits on that property line. So I felt it was good that we were moving off the property line. We're not moving three feet off, we're moving five and a half feet off. The reason I moved five and a half feet off is because I have little projections, we talk about this all the time on the back, that pop off six inches, little window boxes on an upper floor to help break up a long flat wall. So we moved in, we didn't ask for four and a half, we moved in six more inches and asked for five. The air conditioning units are tucked under the buildings, completely compliant. They're not outside your footprint where neighbors, people know they're there. We are planning a six foot high fence on that Westerly line also. So the air conditioning units that are under the house footprint are shielded by six foot high fence also on those four units. So in general, that's how we came up with this overall plan. Again, I tax myself on zoning all the time. I didn't let that dictate how this, I thought this land should be developed. I thought it should be developed thinking about neighbors pushing up to the east because of no neighbor across the street there, there's a park. And wouldn't it be great if we could take, if we could straighten out these triangles and have rectangles? It would have been much easier. I asked him to try to buy it on the town, but he didn't. So, but there's a lot, there's a huge right of way. One of the benefits of this triangle, because it's difficult to design for, is the amount of right of way that comes down River Avenue and slings down Second Avenue is immense. You know, you think about a typical R seventy-five zone, seventy-five hundred square foot lot, you get fifty feet of right of way. So if you're lucky to have fifteen feet, you know, five grass, five sidewalk, five grass, you're benefiting that land to offset some of the bulk of the project. We've got a huge right of way surrounding a piece of property that's tough for us. So to me, pushing it east made all the sense in the world. Get it off the neighbors as best we could, provide an interior lane so everybody gets to park under their house. And if we're only five feet away from diagonal cars parked in front of us, we thought that was a better take from it all. So we designed parking under, an entrance under, except for the two inside units in the back, you would have to go through your garage door to enter your house, but the upper units have a nice front entrance. There's a mudroom and entry room, a family dump spot, as we always talk about, on the first floor, where the stair and the elevator are right there. We can send your groceries up if you have to. There's some small space in the back for a den on the grid. That was an afterthought, but there was room there. We thought maybe about making it covered outside space, but it just, it lent itself to a small den. Once you get up to the second floor, it's open, complete open floor plan, kitchen, family dining, stair elevator and a half path. And then up to the next level, and there's three bedrooms and two baths and a laundry room. We have a half story, so that is a stair. The elevator goes there anymore? Right now? The half?
Did you...
Yeah. So a stair up to the half story, and it's just one loft room. There's no bathroom, there's no bedroom, but it offers a way to the balcony with what we think will be amazing views. So I tried to honor every neighbor that I could. I tried to honor the program that was given to me, and this is what we have to protect.
Now, Mary, the existing structure, the White House, and I think we'll get some testimony later for the next day, but we believe it's thirty-four bedrooms and I believe fourteen baths.
Sorry, how many baths?
I believe fourteen. How many bedrooms are being offered in these six townhouses collectively?
Seventeen bedrooms.
So about half of the bedrooms of the existing structure.
So just to marry on to that, you say how to get seventeen, there are three in five of the units, and in the triangular unit, there's only two bedrooms.
Okay.
That's the one I want, but not yet, but that's all right.
Talk about now, you indicated the units. Talk about the size of each unit from a square foot perspective, if you would, by floors, so the board can get an idea of size of the units.
So five of the units are very similar in size. The lower level has a two car garage, and then it has five hundred and fifty square feet of mudroom, stair, elevator and a small den. The first floor of living, whole living, is one thousand thirty-four square feet. The second floor, that is the bedroom level, is again one thousand thirty-four square feet. And then the loft is two hundred and eighty square feet. It's a fourteen by twenty room. That totals two thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight square feet. I didn't figure out the other one I called. The other one is slightly smaller because of the angle.
And describe the type of windows, material, decks, roofs, gambrels we utilize. Talk about the rear gambols that you tried to do for the neighbors to the west, design standards, things of that nature, so the public can understand. And Bill makes that you...
So Bill Merkler, not Bill Shakers, just so you know, this one's Bill Merkler. He came to me and said, "I want Victorian, I want it to look like it could have been built in Belmar, turn of the century." And we talked a lot about Hamptons feel, Cape Cod feel, New England feel. We want to do shape, we want to do white trim, we want to do simulated divided light windows.
I'm sorry, what were these, Mary? I didn't say them.
All again?
Yeah.
Shape, size, white trim, wide white trim, simulated divided light windows, which is the upgraded, so they booked white traditional windows. We have beautiful grill patterns, diamond grill patterns and spider butt grill patterns. We have ovals. We have a mix of small double huns and big double huns. At each of the balconies on the living room level and the master bedroom level, we actually hope to do a big folding flat store so that the outside can be coming inside and just take advantage of the views as best we can. I think we were going for a very classy, upgraded, not overdone look. The admiral roofs help us fit a loft on the third floor, and then they offer interest in that we don't have a big box, we don't have a flat roof. We have beautiful, intricate brick chimneys. We're trying to make this look quality and old fashioned at the same time, not overdone mock.
And referring to, I believe, the diagram, is that A eight?
Yes.
Furthest right, that shows the streetscapes from, is that First and Second Avenue as one would...
I'll put my back to you.
As one would see if they were walking down the streetscape to see what the appearance of the two structures...
Yes, so from south...
I'm sorry, Mary, just for the record, identify what your...
A eight is a colored elevation of what you would see on Second Avenue if you looked north at the site. And I'm showing it to scale. There's five and a half feet to the west, then the width of our project, the lane, the width of the second building, I should have said second building, and then the distance to the corner. So here's the curve. I drew it to scale so you could get a sense of what the streetscape is. You know, normally we have ten feet between buildings if they're both at their five foot fifteen, we've got twenty. We have the five and a half where we normally would have five. You know, technically, it's a rear yard setback. It reads from the street as a side yard. And then we have land out at the point that we're not filling.
Now, do you know, or could you tell the board and the public that if one is walking east to take their stroll on the summer's day and the board were down Second and they were going to come to the first structure on their left, what is the width that they'd be walking past that structure with the perception, let's say, of it being a three-story home to their left? What is the width of that structure?
This is forty-seven feet.
And traditionally, what is the width of homes that are built in the north end of Belmar or Inlet Terrace or First or Second Avenue that you have customarily done in that area of town?
So on the fifty foot wide lots, we range between thirty-two and thirty-five. On Inlet Terrace and double lots, we double that, so up to seven.
So a forty-five foot width structure...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven foot width structure is not out of place on the streetscape on First or Second as you're transversing up and down the street?
Correct.
Did you design it in such a fashion so that it, with my compliments, I'm the only one who hasn't complimented you, yet that it looks like a gorgeous home on the streetscape?
Yeah, so Bill saw my first rendition and said, "That looks like an office. Make it look like a residence." So we curved the roof lines, we put in more brackets, we put in more eyebrow roofs, we put in a better tread package and made it look much more residential as it is.
And then when you come to this next structure, that I'll call the oceanfront structure, what is the comparable width of that structure on the ocean?
This one's forty-nine.
And same or similar testimony that that's within the width of the structures that one would, a single family residence structure, one would see on a streetscape?
Yes.
In the north end of town or Inlet Terrace?
Yes. And I'd like to point out that they're not identical. They look very similar in bulk, but there's different window patterns, there's different widths to the cross gable. So even though they look similar and marry well, they're not identical. And that's important, I think.
And did you take that all into consideration when you were designing it so it didn't look vanilla, cookie cutter, and it would be different, exciting for the board and for the public?
Yes. So on the bottom of A eight is the north elevation. So if you're walking, yeah, upriver, but it's not skewed. It's from due north. And looking back, you would see the back of the northmost unit or the front of the northmost unit and its front entry, and the side of the triangular unit with that same alleyway roadway between, and then the distance to the point. So if you're looking dead on south, this is the view you would see, and it's the same exact dimensions that Mr. Shakers asked about because it's the back of those same buildings, but they're fronts because we have front doors. And then if you'd like, A nine is a look from the ocean, back, ocean at your back, looking due west, so it's the east elevation, is what you would see at the east facade or the eastmost building. And then I put in plan to scale what you would see of the back building behind it. The other two units of that back building are behind the unit completely. So you see part of the third unit and full of the fourth unit because the land is diagonally away from you. And then at the bottom of A nine, I have the west elevation, that this is the view that it would, you would see from the west, what the neighbors would see that are west of us. And it's the back of the four unit building with those boxed out windows with little roofs on them and skirted roofs and brick chimneys. And at the bottom is that six foot high fence that blocks the bottom back doors of those units for privacy.
Now, did Bill ask you to also gambrel the back roof for detail and beauty irrespective of price of construction on the back so it would be both symmetrical and aesthetically pleasing for the west elevation as well?
He did.
And you discussed with him, he could have, of course, had savings and a less attractive building for the neighbors to the west. And what was his instructions when you discussed that?
He wanted it to, an operable. He wanted to, and I created one.
Are these gas fireplaces or wood burning fireplaces?
Yes.
Did we talk about, it's 11 o'clock, my second application, I guess I'm getting a little slower. Did we talk about materials yet, roofing material, siding material?
We didn't talk about roofing. Roofing would be an upgraded asphalt fiberglass.
And what about the-
I'm sorry, upgraded- Asphalt fiberglass.
Thank you. And what about the siding and the trim? You talked about colors, but what type of materials would you then recommend?
Shape siding and composite trim.
Okay. And the shape siding would be what type of material?
We're not 100% sure yet, but it would definitely be a shape, whether it's a vinyl or a cement, more likely. We're not sure if we're doing wood, only for the maintenance factor.
And the lane, what type of material are you recommending or specing in the lane?
Papers.
Papers. And is there a particular, are there walks that you're specing as well?
Sure, yeah, there's walks to the front doors.
And what type of materials are you specing for the walk?
I'll be correct, cobblestone, papers.
Yes. And are the cobblestones for the walks as well?
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, question. Is the attorney going to be asking Ms. Herrn questions?
Yes, but maybe not tonight.
Right.
I can come back.
And we're going to have to, at what point, reschedule this?
I defer to the chair.
I think we're wrapping up here, close to 11:00. We're going to reschedule it and get another meeting and keep going.
So do we want to keep assessing what's going on with this building?
I think this may be another 12:00.
All right. Well, with that, then what is there our next meeting?
Hey, thank you, Ms. Herr, for your testimony. Emily, Mary?
Thank you.
So, Chair, so April has-
If I could just ask the public to keep quiet while we're finishing out the meeting. Thank you very much.
So we have November 15th meeting and there's a self-stored use variance application on, there's a bulk variance application for an addition, and another application for residential addition. And then, just for the record, for December 20th, we have the continuation of the Chapman hearing and we also have, at least on record, I think, Ms. Herr, Shakers' Belmar Inn application. Now, just so we know, to your knowledge, is Belmar Inn still on for December 20th?
So far.
Okay. So, Chairman, like, my part's easy, I said that, but there's a tough agenda, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can, are you talking about, my professional planner, Mr. Steck, who will be testifying, is unavailable for the November 15th meeting.
I think we were saying both those meetings are open, right?
Okay, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, I thought April was excellent. So I don't know how. My part's easy, so I don't know.
April, what do you look at?
I'm confused.
Well, what are we saying today?
I could give you the agenda for both meetings, for both of them.
You gotta have a special meeting, there's no one-
You have that special meeting or just the January?
All right. We haven't really talked about a special meeting or a planning, so I don't know if anybody has to offer dates. Does anybody have a feeling?
And I will say, special meetings are particularly tough in November because of Thanksgiving, the League of Municipality Convention in December for obvious reasons, but I can't fit it in.
Well, I haven't agreed with you. Can we push it to the January meeting? Is that acceptable? I don't know that we have much to receive.
Yes, unless for some reason my Belmar Inn can't make the 20th of December, maybe I could notify you sometime earlier on this. I still have a thing with my revision, my revision plans that this doesn't-
Would that cause a problem in notification, Mr. Kennedy? I assume we're-
Yes, I mean, if, if, feel like I'm assuming it's never to be required. For the, as-
Unless you put, unless you put, I don't want to do that, do that, do, I don't want to schedule this one on December as well and have problems with both taking on to it. I'm trying to figure out how to accommodate this year. I've got two big hearings that maybe we got to-
What's the main challenge?
Mr. Chair, I'll yield my December date for this one on December if that will work. I'll yield my Belmar Inn for December if it will work, but we notice on-
All right, so then this one, you would re-notice for the Belmar Inn, you'd appear after Chapman with this application in December.
Okay, so what we're doing here, we're going to carry this application to December 20th, 2018. December 20th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. And no further notice required, but Mr. Shakers will get that, that one, that later on. So Tim Middleton and Rick Brodsky-